Juan. All right, everybody, we're here for Budget and Finance Committee work session on the operating budget. And we've got Mr. Cooper and I am in the chamber. We've got the other council members on WebEx, and we're gonna get going. So, a couple of things this morning distributed to all council members and on my website, what the final substitute will look like from the, from me as Chair, is Budget and Finance Committee. The agenda for today is we're gonna talk about CARES Act, have an opportunity for discussion about what's reimbursable, what's not. Then, we're gonna talk about the $100 million in savings that is in both the mayor's proposed budget and my proposed budget, and see if people want to talk about options for that. And then, the three remaining substitutes, mine, and then Councilman Glover and Councilman O'Connell, they're gonna have an opportunity to discuss the status of their substitute budgets and tell us what's in them. So, we'll get going by talking about CARES Act. And what I put on the agenda that got distributed was that this is an opportunity to ask questions about what's covered by the Act, not covered by the Act, and strategies about including or not including an expense that might be reimbursable in the budget. This will not be a discussion about how to spend the 121 million the city has already received. This is limited to talking about how the Act may impact the operating budget spending. And before we dive into that, I want to check to see whether we've got Mary Jo Wiggins from Finance on the line. Are you there, Ms. Wiggins?
I am here. Yep, I am here.
All right, hold on a second. We'll have the sound in the chamber turned up so I can hear you, too. Hold on. Will you try that again, Ms. Wiggins?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, that's awesome. Thank you.
Excellent, thanks.
Thanks for joining us today. And if you don't mind giving us a couple-minute framework about the topic as I read it out, and then we'll open it to questions or concerns. I know when we had our work session last week, there were a few council members that had questions about how this works exactly.
The coronavirus relief fund?
Right.
Not the general?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, and sometimes I will refer to it that way, the relief, the coronavirus relief on the CRF is our 121 million. It is a component of the CARES Act, just as there are several other components of it. And so, when we talk about CRF, that is what I'm referring to. And I think most council members have understood the basics of it, which was that it cannot be used for funds, for expenses that are ongoing, that were budgeted. It cannot be used to replace revenue. I think everybody gets that. And it's really intended for all of our out-of-pocket expenses that the city will go through. But it's also intended to help the city, help the community. And so, I think that's where a lot of the interest lies. We can provide relief for individuals and families that have been impacted by the business closures related to COVID-19, so that does provide economic relief for those that were impacted, like through unemployment, reduced employment, underemployment. We can provide small business grants. We can, there are some then, so what's happened, so those were all of the kind of the basic first pieces of guidance. And what's happened is there are a lot of FAQs to help us interpret how we can also use those funds for some of the things that are COVID-related, but we're also in budget. So, one of the things that you'll see, they made provisions that if we were giving employees additional sick time because of COVID, so they either needed to quarantine at home, they had a family member who was sick they had to take care of, there were all different related reasons that they could take sick time. That time now, even though that is part of their compensation in FY '20, we can actually use some of the CARES Act funding for those, for those, that sick time coverage. Another piece that came through the guidance that's been important to us is that if an employee's role was substantially different than what their normal role, then they could be, that could be considered eligible for the CRF funding. And an example of that would be, we had parks employees that were delivering food, we had fairgrounds and social services department employees that were working at the shelter and the fairgrounds. Even, like, our sheriff's office was down at the testing site. So, certainly, the, you know, working at the testing sites was never a part of their regular role. So, we've accumulated, at this point, it's still estimates, but we do have a pretty good estimate of some of that time. So, that's a general flavor of anything that is out-of-pocket, additional, unbudgeted expense that is directly related to COVID, that the city had to incur, we can, you know, look further into that to see if it's eligible. If it is for sick or repurposed time, that is eligible. And if it is for meeting a secondary impact because of the health crisis, particularly in our community of individuals and small businesses.
Thanks. And can you talk about how various, I know certain nonprofits' information you sent us were not being covered in the mayor's proposed budget because they would be eligible for relief funds? Can you tell us how that works in the mix?
Yeah. So, the, because of that opportunity to provide secondary relief, when there was anything in the FY '21 budget that would typically be considered a bit discretionary, so the direct appropriations and the community partnership funds, many of you may remember them as community enhancement funds, that, that million dollars, along with 1.8 million of direct appropriations, were deemed that those nonprofits, and again, the community partnership funds are not, that is an open application process. We don't know exactly who the departments are going to select during that open process, but the nature of what those departments were trying to accomplish with those funds would most normally be met by a nonprofit who could reasonably now be considered to be serving impact, or families and individuals, or maybe students impacted by COVID. So, the community partnership funds will be used to fund nonprofits that are working directly with COVID-related individuals. Likewise, the direct appropriation, if we, you know, at a high level could foresee that that nonprofit would be serving a COVID-impacted individual or family, we left it out of the budget so that we could continue that same level funding, but we would use the CARES Act funds. So, again, the community partnership funds was $1 million. The direct appropriations that were taken out of the budget was 1.8 million. And the community partnership funds will go through the very similar process that they did last year. The departments will receive those funding, those funds, they will go through the open application. The only real difference, sorry, the only real difference is that part of the, a big, you know, the criteria is that they do have to be working with COVID-related families. Other than that, the departments will still set the criteria. If there is additional mission or targets or groups that they want to address, the departments will handle that. The direct appropriation, those folks have been named in the budget, I think with these amendments, and they will then go through the contract process. It's not really an open application, but it is a contract process that the Office of Financial Accountability has worked with, the administration, to make sure that they meet all the criteria and targets and guidelines. But again, it has to be within the context of COVID-impacted families. And the other change for FY '21 is that the funds are all to be spent by December 30th.
All right, thank you. And then, I know, I can't remember exactly what the question was, but I know that Councilman Druffel had a question related to a specific nonprofit when we had our work session on Thursday. I hate to put you on the spot, Councilman Druffel, but can you remind me what that was? Go ahead. You need to unmute yourself, Councilman.
Yeah, thanks so much. I started out really well a minute ago here. It sounded great. So, and as, in different, like, summer school or after-school programs that could catch us up, with some of the academic shortfalls we had in the last couple of months seemingly could positively impact a lot of our MNPS students, is there an opportunity to take some of the funds and use them for summer school that could help them catch up in the academic side?
Yeah, I did actually, right after that last budget session, reach out. We have engaged attorneys to help with some of the interpretation of the guidance. And we did, I did reach out to them. Funding reductions in programs is going to be a little bit, it leaves Metro a little exposed. It really probably looks like the Education Stabilization Fund is more likely where those would be a clear-cut use for CARES Act funding. But of course, that, those funds are going, they're applied for and being received by MNPS. Those aren't coming through Metro. The, the CRF funds speak specifically to distance learning and not as much about other educational support.
So, just to confirm, there's a separate bond and mechanism to support such as, you know, the computers and devices we need for distance learning? Is that correct?
Yes. The CARES Act guidance specifically says that the CRF, the 121 that we have access to, can be used for laptops, hotspots, other, like, professional training that the teachers might need. But that piece on the distance learning piece is eligible under the CRF.
Okay. Those were my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Yeah, and I think somebody, I was just gonna say, somebody else, I think, asked about textbooks. And that was a similar response, that the textbooks would not have, the need for the textbooks is not because of COVID. The need is because of the lost revenue. And using the funds, which could be looked at as revenue replacement, is where we really get into an area of exposure upon audit, that they will be deemed ineligible.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to that last comment regarding textbooks, so right now, when kids are there in person, a classroom set is not ideal, but it's usable. When kids are having to use distance learning, remote learning, textbooks become inadequate. So, I think that there's a solid argument that it is because of COVID and not because of just the revenue loss. Has that been considered, sir, for them?
Yeah.
You know, I, I would, go ahead, Bob.
I was just gonna add, I know a lot of us have heard this from a lot of constituents, that it's bad enough that there weren't enough textbooks to begin with, but at least in the classroom, there could be photocopies handed out and things would work out in the end. But then, once everybody goes home, that's off the table, and the lack of textbooks becomes more acute. I think that's, I'm just, I guess, underscoring, a lot of us have heard that from a lot of people.
Okay, yeah, Chair, thank you for the certification. I will, again, be happy to further that question up through, through some of the legal interpretation. What, there was some concern that buying more textbooks could be, could put the CRF funds in a little bit of an area of exposure that we might not want to.
Councilman Rosenberg, any follow-up?
No, I appreciate it, and thank you for going back and pressing on that, because I think it's really critical moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and also.
Thank you. Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Chair. I apologize if I didn't get my hand down in time. I was just concurring with Councilman Rosenberg and to Ms. Wiggins. I mean, I certainly, you know, you can say there's some concern, but that 100% was elevated to me by constituents in the context of COVID, where they do not have the classroom set, like, that, you know, so, you know, we can allude to this might, or those concerns are, but I think we can stand very firmly on the ground that when children are learning from home, they each need their own textbook. So, I would encourage, you know, to, same as other colleagues have said. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Bradford? Councilmember Bradford took your hand down. Okay, I'm guessing he was.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I thought I was unmuted. So, my question is, you know, Councilmember Rosenberg brought up the point of the textbooks, and that's not really having enough with students going home. If we're gonna be using CARES funding to provide laptops to all these students, has there been any thought made to providing any kind of licenses or any online textbooks that are either similar to what we have, or if we have textbooks that have an online ability?
Ms. Wiggins?
I have not heard that, but I think that would be a question for MNPS. The question for online textbooks hasn't been posed, but they might have that in their plan.
Councilmember Bradford?
Yeah, it might be something good for them to look at. If we're, if we're saying that we're, that COVID-19 is the reason we are having to buy these laptops for all of our students, and we're using CARES funding, then why not go to the next step and say, well, because of this, we'll need to ensure that each student has access to an online textbook and include some of that cost out of the CARES.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. Anybody else with CARES Act or CRF questions for Finance? Councilman O'Connell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, for my part, I'm just primarily curious about the specific events. I know there's sort of this commitment to, a committee needs to look at this stuff, but if I'm looking at this proposal for schools, for computers, and then I'm thinking about how many, we've been out here since the CARES Act was initially passed, and, you know, looking at other cities that have already done programs on rent relief, do we have a sense of timeline at this point for how we're gonna disperse these funds? I mean, I think the need for relief in the community is yesterday, and I just, I want to make sure we're moving with appropriate speed to get some of the whole point of the CARES Act to get that money out of the community as fast as possible.
Ms. Wiggins, any thoughts about that?
The, we have been putting together many of the different components. I think now the position is that this committee wanted to see the approval of the full plan. So, I'm not sure that the administration has that ability to put those funds out as quickly as before. I don't, you know, Chair, if you maybe want to speak to some of the intention of the committee and what might be possible, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, I'll be happy. I mean, what I told the mayor directly and Finance directly is that the committee process was a complete backstop if there was a lack of leadership from the administration in getting it done first. And so, it, nobody should put it going slower on the committee process. I would have been happy to have other people think about it and propose ideas. A couple of weeks ago, the response from the administration was that it was getting slow-walked in order to make sure to have a reserve of money available at the end of the year. And so, I think it's a fair question from Councilman O'Connell about what the intention is from the administration on the pacing of all this. There currently is no committee, won't be one in place until the end of June, assuming it passes in legislation next week. So, I, I mean, I'll join in being a little confused about what the intention is on, as far as the pacing goes.
Yeah, I guess, Mr. Chairman, to that point, I have had several community-sourced recommendations on the table for weeks, and I don't honestly even know who to go to to get most of this stuff seriously considered. But I know there have been serious conversations specifically in rent relief. And I, the need for getting, you know, if we know we're gonna be in a distance learning posture, at least in some capacity and fall, fine. But, you know, we've got to go every single month with rent coming due, mortgage payments coming due, credit card pay coming due, utility assistance necessary, all of these things. And the CARES Act has made it very clear, when those are COVID-19-specific, we should be accruing expenses appropriately and then using that fund. So, I, I'm happy to re, repeat myself on the priorities that I think are especially important, you know, but I want to make sure that that's actually getting somewhere that those parties might be fully considered.
Yeah, I will, you know, continue to make that statement. I mean, you are correct, the funds are eligible for things like rent, mortgage assistance, utilities, food.
Right. So, I guess I'm coming back to, you know, we know we have organizations on the ground doing some of this work. Should we not be expanding capacity? Should we not be enhancing the capabilities of the Metro Action Commission? Should we not, you know, be working with everybody and workforce, understanding where we can apply these funds? And maybe this is a better way to ask, what work has already been done?
The, the eligibility information has been shared with administration. I am not in every conversation of all of the different groups that they are working with. I am making sure they know the eligibility and that it is there.
And Councilman O'Connell and.
Can anybody?
I was just gonna say, Councilman, that in fairness, I had told Finance this wouldn't be a discussion about how to spend the 121, it was gonna be about how it impacts the operating budget. So, I don't mind a little conversation about this, but as we drift farther into just talking about how to spend the 121 million, I think we should maybe save that for another day.
No, Mr. Chair, I appreciate that. I just, I think so many of these things are related, because one of the principal concerns I've heard is that if we are basically questioning that the citizens of Nashville entertain a significant property tax rate increase, we still have not heard how we're going to be offering relief that is a.
Is, you might have cut out Councilman O'Connell. Is there a, what was the question?
But just, we haven't, we have not heard yet. So, as we entertain a property tax rate increase, we have heard no proposals for how relief from the CARES Act might be coincident with asking citizens to tolerate that. And I think that is why this is a relevant conversation.
Councilmember, I hear you. I just don't, I don't have the answers. I have had conversations about what is eligible, what is not. You are correct, those things are eligible. And I will continue to, you know, relay your questions to administration.
So, does the administration have anybody present who can speak to the amount of work that's been done?
Mr. Jameson, do you care to comment on that?
Can you hear me, Councilman?
Yes.
All right. So, with respect to the committee formation, the mayor submitted a letter, I believe, three weeks ago, I think strongly endorsing that idea. If Councilman O'Connell has submitted specific spending recommendations, I apologize, I have just not seen those, but if I, if I get those, I'll be glad to submit those to the mayor for consideration. An appropriation, supplemental appropriation resolution is coming tomorrow. It will go beyond the Chrome Book funding, if it is the council's appetite. I spoke to, I think, almost every single council member over the weekend and did not, including discussions of the formation of the committee. And unless I missed it, and I apologize, I did not hear a single voice of resistance to the committee process for purposes of determining which buckets get the largest share. There are several viable funding opportunities, which one should be deserving, I think, requires council and committee consideration, and I think the mayor welcomes that input. If it's the will of this body, however, that the mayor and the mayor alone make those certain decisions, I think he would certainly act on that.
I guess my question is more, as we commend the committee process weeks into the, you know, the availability of these committees, what work has already been done? We saw a report of some informal advisement to the mayor. Has there been a template prepared? Has there been, I got the buckets, but I mean, are we looking at, you know, I'd just like to sort of know what work has already been done as far as.
Sure.
We'll be passing a budget ideally next week, and I don't know how, what I can go back to constituents and say in terms of also expect other relief funds to become of a community and win.
Sure. And because the state funds dwarf ours by virtue of the 2.3 billion minimum that they'll be receiving, and we're yet unclear as to what portion of that, beyond the 121 that is specifically allocated to Nashville, what we'd be receiving from the state. The concern is whether or not to avoid redundancies in allocations between what the state decides to submit it on and what the city's limited funding can be spent on. The regulations do change with some frequency, I believe, as recently as within the past 10 days. And so, because of that, what we've been focusing on, primarily with the assistance of Ms. Wiggins, is what the regulatory allowances are. She's covered even recent changes in terms of if your employee's role changes, not hiring new employees, but simply if their role changes, that is now eligible. That was not the case more than 10 days ago. So, we're trying to maintain a steady upkeep of what the current state of the regulatory terrain is, but otherwise awaiting the wisdom of the committee. Again, if it's the preference of this body that we abandon the committee process, that's, the mayor would be interested in hearing that.
Well, listen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move us on here. Mr. Jameson, you know that's a ridiculous dichotomy, that those are the only two choices in the universe, and, and Councilman O'Connell's asking fair questions, but we can circle back to that after I get through some more people here. Councilmember Johnston?
Hi. So, I apologize, apologize in advance, because this is my first one, like, really deep diving into this budget, and so I have questions about five items. So, I don't want to get off-topic of, is this the right time to do this?
If it's not about the CARES Act, no.
It's not about the CARES Act, I promise.
All right, well, then, we'll circle back to it later. I want to wrap up the CARES Act conversation.
Okay.
Thanks. Councilmember Virture?
Thank you, Chair. The point of contact?
For the CARES Act?
Yes.
Mr. Jameson, who's the point of contact?
Mrs. Wiggins has been doing the majority of the analysis regarding the. Mrs. Wiggins has been doing the majority of the analysis regarding the regulations.
Okay, thank you so much.
Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to echo Councilman O'Connell. I think what is so concerning to me is in this moment where many of us are being contacted by constituents, we are trying to get every last cent out of this increase. I recognize that the regulatory landscape is changing, but, you know, we've known we had 121. There are things that, you know, this budget is dependent on, particularly, you know, MTA, and those things are good. But I just, I'm frustrated in that I think it's important that council have some input on this, but that we're not being respectfully more nimble about this because, I mean, this is a massive tax increase, so whether it's, you know, you know, tax relief or individual programs, or just, you know, hopefully by August, you know, getting the increase down a few cents, that may seem, you know, de minimis in the scheme of things, but really does matter to folks. You know, the fact that we're just still kind of not sure what we're doing with this, it's very frustrating. So Ms. Wiggins and Mr. Jameson, respectfully, I would just ask, you know, I know there's something coming that has a few other things beyond the Chromebooks. I know we're getting the committee in place. I'm not trying to preempt the work of the committee, but like, this is not a time to be moving so slowly. Respectfully, please, thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Stiles? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I had somebody in front of you. Councilmember Sledge?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question from, I guess this is from Mike. You know, with the announcement today that the administration wants to, I think, 25 mil in the net books, I'm looking at the mayor's letter from the fact that we might have, you know, close to 39 million in already potentially reimbursable expenditures, some of which have been discussed already. And the way I do the math, and based on what I found, what I think the mayor had said before, was wanting to kind of hold back half of the 121 for potential use down the road, we're already past 121 when you add that up. So on top of little, I don't know if, maybe they could speak to you, the 38.8 is fully what they want, what they're looking for, some part of that in the first round, but it seems to me that there's already been sort of informally a plan without, without a, without a plan being discussed.
Well, then I'm, I'm confused, and I apologize, because I'm hearing both spend it now or proceed with the committee. We had understood the latter to be the preference of the body. What you're getting tomorrow in terms of the supplemental appropriation, forgive me if I've misunderstood, but the supplemental appropriation, at least with respect to the Chromebooks, that has a time sensitivity to it because of the order date turnaround, about a 60-day turnaround. So that has some crucial nature to it tomorrow. But if it is the will of the body to include spending on other items that have not gone before a committee, but for which we have already incurred expenses that are CARES Act reimbursable, those will be included in the resolution. And if it's your desire to approve those tomorrow for rest of any committee consideration, you have that option, but we are trying to meet you at every step of the way and do this as quickly as possible, but without the deliberation we understood you'd be expecting from the formation of the committee.
Sure. To the, to the point of the dichotomy, it feels like there are other options there, which are none of the above. So I just want to be, I think that when we talked about a committee, I think it was in the spirit, and I'll, I'll share, leave it to you, because if your language is in the legislation, I think that was in the spirit of collaboration. And I think what we have been hearing from some of us, and what my intent to express is, I don't know that we're collaborating right now. Just, I would just ask you, thank you.
All right, everybody, I'm gonna take that invitation from Councilman Sledge to wrap up the conversation about how to spend the 121 million, because that's really not directly related to the operating budget, but I will take that invitation. Mr. Jameson, that language, I know you know this, the language got drafted because it started to appear that there was offline, non-transparent conversations taking place about trying to figure out how to spend the money. There's absolutely no way for the mayor to spend it unilaterally because the council have to appropriate the money. And, and so my desire, and that of my co-sponsor, my vice chair, Councilmember Toomes, was that if it was going to be in-the-dark, non-transparent conversation going on, then by the time we got to the budget being passed, we would force a transparent conversation. And when you say it's the desire of the council to have the committee, it's a desire of the council to be part of the process. Nobody thought that the mayor's office would just take a month off after the committee idea was being proposed, and I don't think anybody thinks the mayor's office has taken a month off from thinking about it. But the fact of the matter is, whatever's going on, we don't know about it. And, and, and I think people are looking for some comfort that, in fact, something is going on, and what it is, and how it might help people. And I think we all know that we are going to have the backstop of having to appropriate it through the council, and we will have the backstop of the committee we create. But we, I mean, y'all are doing something to spend it somehow, or make suggestions about how to spend it somehow, where Councilman O'Connell started it, doing homework to think about how to spend it, or investigate things. And that's the part, as council members are about to have to be in their districts, talking about the tax rate increase over the next week, any sort of information about what's going on with that is what I think would be appreciated. And I'm gonna just ask, if people want to talk about how to spend the 121 million more, we're gonna do it at the end of the meeting and not now, because we're gonna talk about the operating budget first. And if there's a desire to talk about spending the 121 when we're done with everything else, I'm happy to keep doing that. But for now, we're gonna move on to the next topic, which is the proposed 100 million in savings that was in the budget. And what got written on the agenda for this, it's an opportunity for council members interested in amendments to reduce the planned savings below 100 million, to offer their ideas and hear from Finance about the topic. I think you all know that I've, like, I don't plan on supporting any effort to reduce that 100 million, but I wanted to make sure that we had a convert, an opportunity to talk about it. And then we got that letter today from the comptroller that I'm gonna start, well, Mr. Cooper, can you, can you describe what's in that letter, and then we'll open it up to the folks who got their hands raised?
Hey, you're talking about the letter?
Yeah, we're not gonna be able to. Mr. Cooper's gonna have to-
Mr. Chair, would it help?
Yeah. Mr. Cooper is gonna step into another room so we can get rid of a feedback issue, sound feedback issue.
Okay, is that better?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So the comptroller basically said three things. First, he said, he recognized that SNP had put us on a negative outlook in our bond rating. So while we still maintained a double-A rating, we are now, instead of stable, we are now negative outlook, and that's essentially because of our low fund balance and our high debt to expense ratio. So that was the first thing, was he acknowledged that. Then he stressed, in order to maintain a good bond rating, he stressed the importance of the, keeping your reserve levels up at the policy levels. And so he recommended that the operating reserve that is set in the mayor's at 5% not be decreased by the council. Then the third part is, if the council did decrease that, then the comptroller would not approve the budget, and he made a very frank statement that the state would take over the city's finances in that situation. He, he also acknowledged that you cannot use borrowing as a revenue source to balance the budget.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Toomes, you want to go first?
Thank you, Chair. So my interpretation of that letter is that any discussion of reducing the fund balance is because the comptroller's not going to approve our budget if we reduce that 121. So I don't see us having an option in that case, in that context.
Mr. Cooper?
That's the way I read the letter. I think we would, we'll have to do something to keep the fund balance at that 5% level.
Yeah, if that's, go ahead, Councilmember Toomes.
That's all I had, Chair. I mean, I don't see, why even discuss it? The comptroller's pretty much put his foot down, said it's an option to reduce it.
Well, I, I hear you on that. I had put this agenda out on, over the weekend before I knew about that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna hear folks out here, and, but it may, may be a short conversation. Councilmember Virture?
Thank you, Chair. This comment is back to, to COVID. My recommendation would be for us to not entertain it on the budget work session, for you to call a special budget and finance committee meeting just specifically for, for COVID.
That's a good suggestion. I might take you up on that. Thank you. Councilmember Porterfield?
Thank you so much, Chair. I appreciate you for recognizing me. I wanted to, initially wanted to discuss the possibility of doing an amendment to reduce the 100 million fund balance down by 7.5 million to supplement funding for MNPS, but it sounds as though that is no longer a possibility. So if I'm understanding correctly, under no circumstances can we go below the 100 million.
It's a little more nuanced than that, it's, but it's, I think the letter is written that we can't have the operating funds, so that's the, I'm sorry, the general fund, so the USD and the GSD general funds can't be below 5%. And, and those, and that's where most of the money is, and so there might be very small amounts of wiggle room, but not in the millions. Is that right, Mr. Cooper?
Yes, sir, that's my understanding.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thanks. Councilmember Henderson is next.
Thank you, Chairman. I wanted to ask regarding the 100 million, best I can deduce from the mayor's budget, and I apologize if I don't have your substitute before me, but that it's effectively 95 million plus 5 million that's showing up in our administrative, at a glance, as rainy day fund? Is that correct? It's 95 plus that 5?
Yeah, I'll ask Mr. Cooper to confirm, but I think, I think that's correct. Is that right, Mr.?
That is correct.
Okay, and so then I guess my question is then, is 95, you're saying it's a little nuanced and there's some wiggle room, I know there's not much, but is, is the wiggle room the difference between the 95 and the 5, or?
You know, that's, that's a good-
Can you kind of speak to that, why it's framed that way or constructed that way, please?
Yeah, let me, that's a good question. Let me ask Mr. Cooper to comment on that, and maybe we might have to ask Finance.
Yeah, so the, the 5 million is being set aside just as cash, not as part of the anticipated fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. So I, I think the comptroller was speaking about fund balance and our 5% policy. I know the, the comptroller in his presentation some months ago addressed the lack of cash that we have on hand and the real concern he had about that. I assume that concern remains, but yeah, I would turn that over to Finance to see if they could better explain the, those two parts.
Somebody at Finance want to address that?
Hi, this is Kim McDonough.
Go ahead, Kim.
Yeah, I'm not sure if Kevin was on the line. The, I don't believe the letter, Kevin's more familiar with the letter than I am. I don't believe the letter mentions the rainy day fund.
I think you-
The letter from the comptroller.
I think you're-
It is not.
And I see Mr. Crumbo is unmuted himself. Do you have some-
Oh, okay, good.
Would you like to add something, Mr. Crumbo?
Yes, Chair, sound check. Can you hear me?
Yep, gotcha.
Great. Yeah, so if I could just provide a little education on this. So when it comes to the so-called rainy day funds, different governments look at that term a little bit differently. Some group all of that into their fund balance minimums like we have here and just say, hey, that's our reserve and that's our rainy day fund, and then they, you know, call it different things. Others will call out some, or even all of it, and say it is a rainy day fund, and they do keep it in cash, as was mentioned earlier. And that's the first place one would turn when you've got an immediate need for it. And the purpose behind that is to say, hey, this cash is available for something like, you know, the tornadoes that swept through here several weeks ago and so forth. Here, we're just starting for the first time in Metro's history, something specifically called rainy day fund, putting a very small percentage of our fund balance specifically there for the reasons that are mentioned. The wiggle room, and I've heard referenced here, really has more to do with the schools component. And if you recall, when the mayor introduced his budget several weeks ago, and I spoke after that, I'd mentioned that we had budgeted here for the 5%, same as the comptroller has here, but with respect to schools, we had dropped that just a bit to 4%, only because in this year, we've got about $26 million worth of CARES dollars that have flowed directly through schools. And so that's in a separate account, it's not something that goes into the normal fund accounting for this purpose. And so in our weekly discussions with the comptroller's office, I just pointed out that, you know, for us to increase the fund balances to 5%, the general fund seemed very prudent. Here, we, you know, should count the CARES dollars, the dedicated dollars in some respects, so that, you know, we didn't have to increase the tax rate any more than we're looking at that point like we're going to. So there's a little flexibility on schools that's been granted, but, you know, by and large, from an all-in economic cash standpoint, it does bring us at or around the 5% mark all, all the way across the operating funds.
Okay, so, Mr. Crumbo, what you're saying is to get to the 5% mark, you need 95 million plus the 5 million that you've established as rainy day, or that is separate and distinct from the implications of the comptroller's letter?
No, we, we need those two together. We're just breaking out, like I said, that small percentage here, specifically called a rainy day fund, make sure it's available in cash at all times, so that that's the first money we'll go to when we've got a rainy day.
Councilman Henderson, you might, you mind if I ask a follow-up on that, Councilman Henderson?
Please do, yes, sir, please.
So I, I guess I'm confused, Mr. Crumbo. I didn't, I didn't read the letter as implicating any warnings about the 5 million in the rainy day fund.
Same.
I, I didn't take it as a warning about the rainy day fund, but rather just making a distinction here that when we hear that term, you know, some governments refer just to their fund balances as the rainy day, others will break out something separate for it, and here we're just taking the step to break out a very small portion of the fund balance and call it the rainy day fund, and again, just make sure it's available in cash, so that's the first money we go to when it, when it- that's the first money we go to when it, when it rains.
So, so let me, let me, let me put it this way. So the comptroller's letter had dire threats of takeover if we went below 5% on fund balance for the two operating funds. If, if, if the, I'm, I'm not in favor of this personally, but if the will of the council was to take the rainy day fund and move it from 5 million to zero, would that trigger the dire consequences in the comptroller's letter?
Hadn't thought of it quite that way, but likely so. He's obviously expressed specifically what the expectations are, and again, the wiggle room here, as it says in the letter, is with respect to the pandemic relief accommodations.
Okay, well, you know, I, I definitely appreciate that we need to have appropriate cushion and everything, and I don't want to push everything up to the margins, but I mean, that, that was not clear to me, and I think, Mr. Crumbo, is, you know, those of us who are, you know, looking at the budget and trying to make a good faith effort on compatible amendments that can get this rate down, I mean, even if it's just a few cents, you know, it, it does matter if, you know, that could, I mean, I would not take anything to zero, but maybe the rainy day could be 4.5. I mean, like, there, you know, there are council members who are, you know, combing the budget to try to have something that is compatible either to the chair or the mayor's budget to get the rate down. So, you know, any clarity that we can have, just more, you know, I think what we're struggling with is like, you know, a definitive statement on your part that, yes, if you touch that at all, it will trigger the dire consequences of the comptroller versus, well, it's a little pet, like, so, you know, I, I feel like we're kind of trying to have our cake and eat it too, and so can you just be definitively clear on it? Not for the purposes of just, you know, closing this off, because no, we're trying to work compatibly with you, but is, is that indeed the case? If that, if any comes out of that, it's a problem.
Yeah, so councilite, I'll be, be more clear, the 5 million, when you, all we've done here is taken part of the fund balance and simply drawn a line and said this portion of it, we will keep in cash.
Okay.
So, right, so, okay.
Understood.
Okay, Councilmember Johnson, you're next.
I guess I'm just not understanding the math on that, because aren't we, isn't this a $2.4 billion operating budget?
Yes.
So isn't 5% of $2.4 billion 120 million?
Yeah, there's six tax funds, GSD general, GSD debt service, schools, schools debt service, USD and USD debt service, and the 5% applies to the GSD general fund and the USD general fund. So you, in order to do the math on the 5%, you have to, like, the GSD general is like a billion 50 million, and so you got to figure out 5% of that, and then the USD general is some other dollar amount that I can't remember, and you have to figure out 5% of that. And if you look at page, page five of the budget ordinances, it's got the math at the bottom of that page five.
Okay, that does not include the schools' fund balance.
If you look at bottom page five, you'll see that, right, that's calculated separately.
So it's not part of the 5% that has to be reserved?
It, the 5% is by fund.
Okay.
It's not cumulative. It's, it's not, it's not cumulative. Councilmember Toomes?
My apologies, I forgot to put my hand down.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember O'Connell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the recognition, the opportunity to participate here. I guess everybody just went through the things that I was trying to get at, but the new question I have is sort of the wiggle room, right? I think council is feeling extraordinary pressure to, or ways to mitigate the, the economic pressure of a proposed property tax rate increase, and if there is any wiggle room, it'd be nice to be able to quantify that, because that is, I mean, to, to Councilmember Henderson's point, if, if the comptroller is really going to come take over our finances over, you know, anywhere from 500,000 up to 5 million dollars because of cash reserves, I mean, you know, that's a thing, I guess, but if we do have wiggle room that is out there, I, I need to quantify that for my constituents.
Okay, so Councilman, this is Director Crumbo. So let me help you out there. So the 4% for schools plus its, its COVID relief is all the wiggle room there is. So we've come down just a little bit on the percentage with the consultation with the comptroller, and then included that 26 million in CARES funding. So that's it. That's the only wiggle room that, that I foresee right now, and I don't think that we're in a position to go challenge the comptroller as to, you know, whether he's going to make good on taking over our checkbook or not. I think this letter, you know, speaks for itself.
Well, and then the other thing, Director Crumbo, I think you'd agree with, is the, the mayor's proposed budget has the USD general fund at 5.3%, and because the USD general fund is relatively small, if you decided to push that down to 5 instead of 5.3, it would be $393,000 to spend. So there's 393,000 to keep that above 5%.
Yeah, I had not thought about it quite that granularly. I don't think I can click, you know, the mouse fast enough to go do the calculation on that, but that, I, I don't disagree with you, I just can't do the math right here.
Yeah, and, and guys, on the general fund, which is where the lion's share of the money is, in the mayor's budget, it's got a fund balance of 50, 50 million 298,900, and it rounds to 5%, but if you actually go do the math, it's like 4.7 something percent. So if you add it, if, if you did it instead of 5.0 and you went to two digits in the decimal places, we'd actually be under 5% already in the general fund for the GSD. So there's, there's nothing there, because it's, we're already using rounding to, to get to 5%. On the USD general fund, in the mayor's budget, it's 5.3%. I'm pretty sure the math is right, there's $393,000 to spare there.
Thank you, Chair, that's helpful. That's, I think, what Councilman O'Connell is alluding to, and I appreciate Chairman Mendez's response. I mean, we really are looking kind of at the granular level here, so, so I do appreciate your response, thank you.
Thanks. Councilman O'Connell, anything else? And, and so I'm, I'll, I'll go ahead and be that granular about the school fund too, because I know that's on a lot of people's minds, and, and Finance can tell me if I get this wrong, but there's 4% as Finance Director mentioned, of fund balance in the mayor's budget, and, and if somebody wanted to try to push it down to 3%, there might be about $9 million there that would be available. However, I had Mr. Cooper send you all the updated information, you got it late yesterday, I think, about nutrition spending out of the school system, about they spent 5.4 million dollars more than they had available to them, and that's either going to have to be reimbursed from the CARES Act, or it's going to hit their fund balance. And so while on paper, if you wanted to chase the school fund balance all the way down to 3%, and, and if that was okay, you'd have to, that, that's maybe 3 million or so maximum. Mr. Crumbo, is that approximately correct?
Yes, that, that sounds in the ballpark. I haven't been immersed in all the day-to-day details of that nutrition fund, but that, and I know Kim McDonnell's on the line, but that sounds in the ballpark.
All right, thanks. And Councilman O'Connell, anything else?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. Councilmember Johnston, is that hand up again?
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to make a comment about the nutrition fund, because I understand that they went over. In my household, when I make decisions about something, there are consequences, and there are, I don't know how many restaurants and all that in this county that have shut down and received zero revenue for a long time, people were laid off, people have lost their jobs, all of that, and they knew that the school system was not going to be coming back until the fall, maybe, and yet, there was, there was no action taken in order to mitigate that at all. That, to me, is maddening, when we knew what was happening and we still chose to keep our payroll exactly where it was. Just making a comment, sorry.
That's okay. Thanks. All right. I'm not seeing any other hands about the 100 million. I'm going to move to the next part of the agenda, which is a chance to talk about the substitute budgets. I'm told that, and I figured we'd have time to talk about all the options that are out there. In the last couple of years, I really appreciated Chair Virture giving me a chance to talk about my substitute. I'm told that Councilman Glover is not available, and so he's not on the call to talk about his. Councilman O'Connell, I, I know I, I put this on here without talking to you first, I don't know whether you have something you want to talk about today or no.
Sure, and I really do appreciate the opportunity. So, you know, we, I think anybody who is in this working group today, based on this part of this conversation, is very aware of the letter from the comptroller. These past few moments of discussion, I think, have highlighted how seriously we ought to take that. You know, anybody for the past few weeks that's been aware of where we were, I think, could have anticipated up to four potential budget proposals. The chair's budget, I know Councilmember Benedict entertained a notion of submitting a substitute. It sounds like Councilmember Glover still will do so. And then mine is basically, proposes a framework that steps us for a single fiscal year outside the ordinary conversation of revenues and expenses, right? And it does so in part because it recognizes that this is actually an extraordinary moment. I am very well aware of the communication from the comptroller's office. I'm, I've had a long-running conversation based in thoroughness and diligence with Metro Finance, and I, I know that our chair has asked great questions, thinking through the legality of various parts of this. And, you know, there are still frankly open-ended questions here, but basically in working with Finance, with the administration, with the council office, I have requested that the budget be prepared, that effectively looks at, you know, drawing down from existing federal supports for cities and states, and, you know, anticipates that we might see some more, but, you know, I'm, I'm also aware that we have been cautioned against doing anything that is not a structurally balanced budget, but I still have profound concerns that, given what we have already seen about the, the macroeconomic forces at play in the United States alone, much less global markets, given what we have already seen in terms of national numbers on the number of business closures, given what we already know about unemployment in the state of Tennessee, including localized to Nashville, and knowing that we are starting in a roadmap to reopening period, I think this is one of the riskiest times imaginable to, to start thinking through a property tax rate increase that is considerably larger than any of the past couple of fiscal years that have been proposed, that truthfully were really just, you know, helping to get back to that, that point of structural balance. I do want to get there. I would prefer to get there in a fiscal year when we can start having this conversation primarily on a four-year cycle, on the basis of assessment data, with a full year of COVID-related economic data under our belts as well, and less volatility in our economic forecasts. But, you know, I, I offer this substitute, knowing full well that it, it entertains considerable risk, both of veto as well as action by the comptroller, in, in recognition that I think the road ahead will very likely include, their congressional action will very likely include at least the prospect of other jurisdictions accessing the municipal liquidity facility, and knowing also that I continue to hear from constituents and small business owners, many of whom are both, asking us to look for something, because no one that I am hearing from is eager to entertain a map.
Oops, we lost-
Am I back?
You are back, thanks.
Sorry, there was a, I'm going to blame it on the cat. The, I think we are with people wanting to look for the exceptional in this moment, and, and basically, I'm, I'm offering this budget in that spirit. In terms of details, I think there's a lot of consistency among the proposals that we've seen. I mean, my proposal, again, assumes that we will address to primarily an external source of revenues, potentially borrowing, again, knowing that we're cautioned against that, but it, it does think that are consistent with what I think council has heard are priorities from the community. It does step away from a fund replenishment scenario, so there is kind of a double whammy in that regard, but what it does do is, it preserves Metro Schools employee steps, it includes Metro employee steps and open range increases, it restores some of the nonprofit support in Metro Arts and Community Education, Opportunity Now, Nashville Grad, many things that are consistent with the proposal that the chair has put on the table in his. The, the mechanism for doing that is, is just substantially different. So, you know, I, I will go into this knowing that it will not be met with, you know, kind of a willing acceptance on the part of Finance, but I do think we, we should probably figure out exactly where that space is in terms of can't, shouldn't, and won't.
I'm going to open it to questions here in a second, but what, is there a, what's a tax rate associated with yours?
Oh, thank you. Key point, I'm agreeing with 37 cents of the property tax rate increase.
Okay. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just based on the conversations I've had with constituents, I think it is important for us to have serious discussion about budget options that, that look at smaller tax increases. So I appreciate Councilmember O'Connell thinking outside the box to, to give us some options. To go back to the risk piece of it, as many of you probably know, we are still paying increasing amounts of debt service from debt that was moved forward from 2009 in a creative solution to that crisis that moved some of our payments forward all the way through either 2023 or FY 2024. And at that point then, we will, we will no longer have a bump in debt service. And, and I regret that, as a council member who was aware of that, I was not more diligent in being very specific that we had a plan to deal with what we had done back then, knowing that it was going to come and bite us. So my question would be, Councilmember O'Connell, have you sort of figured out what the next two years look like so that we can deal with this? I mean, what, what sources of revenue provide us with the increased revenue we'll need to pay this back over the next two years?
No, thank you, Councilmember Allen. That's a, that's a great and important question, because I, anybody who observed our fiscal scenario honestly from the moment of the Great Recession through currently, would have some awareness of the scenario you described. My, my anticipation, and, and, you know, again, one of the risks here- and, you know, again, one of the risks here is a discipline we absorb in even considering this, in the sense that my anticipation would be we would resolve all any side effects of this proposal within the boundaries of this term, right? We would not do this as a long-term vehicle. We would do this as a very narrow, specific purpose thing that affected one fiscal year but was resolved within the following three fiscal years. So, truth be told, I fully expect that if we go down this road, we would come around to fiscal year '22. We would get back on the assessment cycle. We would equalize, and we would probably discover that we, in order to do any of the conversation about priorities that I feel like we've been barely able to have in this fiscal year, we'd come back and we'd do that, and we would figure out how we were going to have that ordinary conversation about priorities and budgeting. But we would also know that one of those priorities had to be resolutioned thus.
Anything else, Councilmember Allen?
No, I just think that's a really important thing for us to be aware of as we talk through this. Thank you.
Thanks. And seeing no other hands yet, just Councilmember O'Connell, I think you've been clear about this, and I know that you know I asked this from a place of love. But just to be clear, if we take finance at their word, they're not going to sign off on your budget as being viable? And if we take the state comptroller at his word, he'll take over the city's finances if we pass your budget?
That is currently my understanding, yes.
All right, thanks. I see Director Crumbo with his hand up, too. Do you have something to add, Kevin?
Yeah, I just wanted to compliment Councilman O'Connell. He's been very diligent and creative in trying to find solutions to this. And I just want to recognize those good intentions. And I think, too, that Congress was well-intended with the municipal funding tool, as well as some others, you know, CARES and others. It's hard to get your arms around because these rules are shifting a bit. And, you know, I've committed to Councilman O'Connell and a few others, frankly, that we will continue to track and monitor all of these programs day in, day out. And if we see the opportunities, then we will certainly inform you, help you bring those forward and so forth. But Councilman O'Connell's been quite a gentleman, working with me on this. I fully expect to turn those numbers back around. I won't be able to bless this, as the saying goes, for the reasons you just mentioned, Chair. But nonetheless, I do appreciate the effort and invite others, as they see these ideas and have things they want to bring forward, please do that. I want to be, you know, complete, accurate, and timely in all of our responses here. So thank you, Councilman.
Let me, Mr. Chair, if you'd give me just the privilege of saying, I mean, I give full credit to Director Crumbo and Metro Finance for exploring all of these avenues as thoroughly as possible and getting.
You froze up again on us there. Freddie? I'll give him, you're back now.
I'd just say that the Finance Office under Director Crumbo's leadership has done a great job of answering thoroughly, timely. This has felt collegial throughout.
Thank you. And then, I guess I'm going to ask before I get to mine, I'm going to ask, I don't really know what the answer is, but I'm curious. I'm going to ask Mr. Cooper, the council director, to comment on whether Councilman Glover currently has a substitute that would satisfy the comptroller's criteria.
Councilman Glover submitted some updated information to finance late this afternoon. I think that there was still one issue that they were working on to see if it would balance. So I don't know for sure, but they are having those conversations with him.
All right, thank you. All right, and, okay, so, the chair's substitute, mine, everybody should have gotten an email this morning around 9:30 that outlined what's going into the final substitute. I don't want to read through the chart line by line, because I know you all can do that. But basically, the concept was to, there's, well, in the previous two years, when I had substitutes, the total value of the difference between me and the mayor's budget was $150-plus million. This year, it's substantially smaller. It's about $18 million difference between the mayor's budget and my substitute. And the goal has been trying to spend that additional funds in a way that help people who are impacted the most, and try to do more justice, more fairness with the extra funds at the $1.6 rate. I'm happy to answer questions about it. And I see one hand, Councilman Sledge.
Thank you, Chair. So I have one question, and I think one follow-up from it. On the body, and your substitute on the body camera, the 2.1, where does that money come from?
It comes from the same place that the mayor has proposed. It takes a $4.8 million public health and safety contingency, and reduces it to $2.7 million, and takes the 2.1 and puts it with the Finance Department for them to deliver it to impacted departments. Most of this spending is for things like the DA's office will have, I'm told, six personnel. The public defender's office will have some people, the clerks' offices that need to deal with the video, need some funds. And so the 2.1 would go to finance for them to distribute to departments that needed to accomplish implementation.
Got it, okay. So I think you may have answered my follow-up, but I just wanted to be clear. So otherwise, that contingency fund, your substitute does not, so it leaves 2.8 in, right?
Yeah, it leaves, I think, it leaves 2.7 in that public health and safety contingency.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen? Wait, I'm sorry. On the body camera financing, the mayor and I have agreed that we wanted to have the same funding mechanism, no matter what budget is passed, or the two that would satisfy the comptroller, anyway. And so it's the same mechanism in both paths. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you just explain the changes in targeted savings that have been used to get you from your original substitute to the current substitute that we're looking at? It looks like you had targeted savings in MNPS that were in parentheses, and I should be able to figure this out, but it looks like a double negative. So I'm just trying to make sure I understand what that's saying. And that's no longer there. So were we asking them to do targeted savings, and now we're not for MNPS?
Yeah, let's talk about that. I'm sorry about being confusing there. The mayor proposed a budget that didn't have any targeted savings at all. Two weeks ago, 12 days ago, when I put out what I was thinking about doing in a substitute, that version would have required $2.3 million worth of targeted savings for MNPS. And the final substitute does not have that in it. There's, like the mayor's, no targeted savings requirement for MNPS. So on mine, if you're looking at that chart, that, all that, the $7.5 million and the $4.9 million, all go to them without them having to figure out any additional savings.
Okay. And then, similarly, under general government, not MNPS, there is now a $1.8 million in targeted savings. Is that simply what you're using to pay for some of these other things? And who distributes that amongst which departments?
Yes. So I think we're going to be saying the same thing, right? The mayor's budget proposes no targeted savings. When I floated what I was thinking a couple of weeks ago, it was going to be $4 million worth of targeted savings for the general government. And in the final version, it's reduced to having to find $1.8 million worth of savings. And y'all will remember that the current year we're in was something like $19.5 million worth of targeted savings. This is much, 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 much lower of a savings target than the current year. How it'll work is the same way it's worked this year and last year, which is the Finance Department will allocate that among departments. And hopefully, once 1.8, which is a pretty small number, is distributed among the departments, hopefully it's doable without any hassles.
Great, thank you. And then I just want to say, I appreciate the responsiveness to what we've been hearing from constituents, and especially in the public hearing in this final version. I think you've done a good job, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Bradford?
Yes, I had a question as far as your substitute budget. In years, I noticed that when it came to the funding or the money that Metro was giving to Andrew Jackson Foundation, in your substitute, you were taking that out. I was just curious to your thinking behind that.
Well, let me say generally that I'm no fan of how Metro deals with nonprofits. I think, this is my fifth budget, and it's been done five different ways. That's not fair to council members. It's not fair to nonprofits. And I usually react by staying out of the debate, because it feels like Hunger Games for nonprofits, and it's a relatively low-dollar amount. So I've typically stayed out of it. This year, I got thrust into it because of the role I've got. And, I mean, there's not a good answer, other than I was trying to figure out how to make ends meet. And that's what I ended up with. I will tell you all that I left about $50,000 worth of spending. I know that's not a lot, but I left $50,000 worth of spending in a contingency. And if there's something that 21 council members get behind for the last $50,000, I mean, I regret even saying that out loud, because now we're going to spend three hours at a council hearing figuring out how to spend $50,000 rather than just leaving it alone. But if somebody can get 21 votes for that much, you know, it's sitting in a contingency fund available. Councilmember Van Reese?
I said I'd throw in the idea of a part-time communications person in the council's office.
You should talk to Mr. Cooper about that amendment. Councilmember Allen, is that a new hand or old hand? Old hand. All right, I'm not seeing anybody else's hand up. I know, I want to get to Councilmember Johnston, too. I know you had questions earlier. Do you still have those questions, or did we get to them?
Oh, I have, sorry. It's like, it's like five or six different questions about just stuff.
Go for it.
Okay. So I was looking through administrative at a glance, super fun. My first question is on, and this is probably an easy one, but the subsidy for the fairgrounds went down? No, 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 that was not my question. The question was, is that CARES Act, ooh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to bring that up. But it went down by almost half, and I'm just wondering if they're plugging in some dollars for that, since I'm understanding that we have homeless there that are, that do have COVID-19, so we're sort of housing that there?
I'm going to see whether Finance, or sometimes Councilman Sledge knows all about the fairgrounds. Somebody want to take a stab at that question?
Yeah, this is Kim McDonnell. Councilmember, are you talking about the $180,000?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah. That is strictly to subsidize the Fair Board's operating budget for 2021, because they weren't projecting quite enough revenue for their operations next year.
Okay. Okay. Next question was for, I saw it on USD and GSD, internal services. For '19 and '20, it was both zero and zero, and then all of a sudden, like, for example, GSD went to almost $1.5 million. What is that?
That is the anticipated increase in the internal service billings that will be spread to the departments after the budget is passed. And that's primarily for ITS and fleet. Those internal service funds are self-supporting by charges to the department.
Okay. Oh, so the Sound's debt service, it looks like it's like doubling. Is that just because that's how it was structured?
That is going, that has additional budget money in it, and I'm going to apologize, my clock was going off. Because there is concern about when a season would start, and whether there'd be enough sales tax revenue to cover the debt service. So there's additional money budgeted this year in case it's needed.
So the Sound Stadium is with GO bonds and not revenue bonds?
No, it is with revenue bonds, but we cover some of the shortfall that isn't fully covered by some of the tax increment financing yet. And then this year, we had the concern about the sales tax.
Okay. Housing incentive pilot, and my question was, just looking at the history, in '19, $450,000 was budgeted, but only $85,000 and some change was used. So I see that there was an adjustment to the FY '20 budget down to 300. What we don't know, or what's not reflected here, is what was actually spent out of that FY '20 budget. And I see that we've gone down to 200, but I'm wondering, is there, I mean, we're combing through every piece of sand here. I'm just wondering if there's any wiggle room there. Number one, what is the housing incentive pilot, and is that something that's redundant to the Barnes Fund? And then, is there any room there regardless?
The housing pilot program is a program that's been in place for just a few years now, that provides some rent match for people who are, you know, at a certain income level, at certain income levels, that, it took a little while for the program to get going, and I think that's why so little was spent that first year. But the amount that's left in it this year is based on the existing participants. Fiscal '20 is not over yet, but we can get you an amount that was, that has been paid out year-to-date.
Okay. And is that, is that CARES Act eligible? Would that raise any flags?
Well, Mary Jo Wiggins would have to ask, but I'm guessing not, because it's, you know, it's already in the budget. And basically, it's an affordable workforce housing program that's been in place for a few years.
Okay. Post audit, '19, $1.5 million was budgeted and some change, $1.1 was spent. The allocation for '20 went up to $1.7, and we're down to $1.5 of an allocation. What, do we have any sort of projection of what was spent in '20, and is there any room there? What is post audit, anyway?
Post audit is primarily our external auditors that come in and audit Metro's financial statements every year, like, you know, every government has an audit. And there was, it's based And there was, it's based on the contract value, and there's also some cost studies and some other things that come through there, that come through that fund as well. But, you know, I think we've pretty well scrubbed it for this year.
Okay. The ADM subsidy for, I'm assuming that's Bordeaux Long-Term Care, jumped 2.5 million. What's that all about?
That is an anticipated contractual increase.
But we, when is that contract supposed to be finalized?
It's, that's a good question. We may have already entered into this year's contract extension. I would have to, I would have to check on that, see.
I think it's already been entered. I think that's a...
Yeah, I think it has, too.
I think that's a...
Six million, is it?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry? Six million, is it? Or is there, did we negotiate something less than 6 million?
Did we negotiate? No, I believe what's in the budget is what's in the contract.
And Councilmember Johnston, on that one, maybe offline, Council Director Cooper can give you sort of a, oh, 10-year-long story about how that amount got to be the amount that it is right now. It's a long story, there's a lot of legislation and back and forth to it. I think you'd find, after you hear the whole story, that there's not going to be wiggle room unless you wanted to kick people out of, elderly people out of a nursing home, which, but he can give you the full story.
Okay, last question, I think, sorry if I'm monopolizing. Pay plan improvements went from nominal nothing in 2019 to a little bit of something in 20, and all of a sudden, we're at 2.2 in 21. What pay plan improvements in this type of a budget, I just made my eyes kind of go, what are you talking about?
That was for, that is to cover a general classification study done by the HR Department through the Civil Service Commission. And that is, HR could have addressed that a little bit better. It's not really raises as much as they went in and did a study of certain positions, I think primarily in public safety, and found that they were not classified correctly. So that's what that funding is for.
$2 million for a study?
No, it's not for the study, it's the salaries and tringes that are being adjusted related to the study.
Okay. Okay, and then there's, then there's benefits adjustments, well, that actually went down, I'm not going to question that. Okay, okay, and I'll, maybe I'll talk with somebody about the, just the logistics where it says operating transfer to MNPS General, just these transfer-type things, and this is just my, you know, I'm new, so I'm just trying to understand, but I don't want to monopolize anybody's time. So thank you so much, Chair, I appreciate it.
No problem. Either Mr. Cooper or Maria Calder in our office, I'm sure would help you with that. Councilmember Henderson, you're next.
Thank you, Chair, and I just wanted to follow up. You spoke to how nonprofits were addressed, and of course, I concur with you, I'm not sure I believe either I or Council Lady Bertrand coined the nonprofit Hunger Games, and kind of how that has gone over the last five years, and our concern that between various administrations, we haven't seemed to get that kind of appropriately aligned with strategic goals and kind of a process. But just, so I understand again, and then Ms. Wiggins, I do apologize, I joined the call about eight minutes in, and I think you were speaking to contribute to miscellaneous community agencies at 900K, also in Administrative at a Glance. And so, I'm just trying to kind of reconcile, like, the mayor's budget, that line item, Chair Mendez, your approach, and, you know, we all talk about it a lot, and this is somewhat of a fraught space, but given this roadship, I think I understand that, Ms. Wiggins, would it not be more prudent just to kind of, I know we have two charter obligations, but just to single all of that out, and just take this as a kind of a definitive, difficult year to do that, and then make sure, whether through CARES, or the process that you propose to put in place, that those nonprofits that we appreciate so much, that amplify the good work that we're doing, that they are following some process of, you know, kind of accountable, and it's aligned with the goals. So I do apologize, I think that question comes a little bit maybe because I'm just caught the back end of what Ms. Wiggins was saying, but I'm just trying to reconcile all that, Chair. Have I posed that correctly? So you are, are you singling anything out, Chair Mendez, or rather, zeroing the nonprofit stuff out, or are you having a little here and a little there, and is there a logic to it, I guess?
Oh, I can tell you what my logic was, I'm not sure it's, I think it's pretty good, but not sure. So, back at, one of the first things that we got up on the council resources webpage about the budget, was a nice spreadsheet from Ms. Wiggins that laid out different groups of nonprofits. And as I recall, to the groups of nonprofits, there was some degree of confidence that federal relief funds would be able to take care of those, and those, and I don't remember all the ones in those boxes, but the mayor's budget and my budget don't include any of those. I understand that if the mayor's budget moves forward, he's going to add some certain nonprofits in, that I'll get to in a second, but none of the ones that were on Ms. Wiggins' spreadsheet as believed to be compensable by CARES Act appear in either budget. Now, the mayor's original budget took out all the individual nonprofits and just had a lump sum of money, I think 900,000, and he has since indicated that the intention would be to amend, to add back the rest. So all the ones that weren't in the two boxes for being eligible for CARES Act, all the rest, the mayor plans on having an amendment that will go back in, that with very small one or two exceptions, puts them all in at 50% of the current fiscal year. And so the logic from, as I understand, the mayor's proposed budget is to basically take out all the nonprofits that might be eligible for CARES Act funding, and then as to the rest, put them all in at 50%, very close to 50%. What I've done is tweaked those, mostly going closer to 100%, but not all the way to 100%. And so my logic has been to replenish them, but not to 100%. There have been some exceptions, like the things that are increased the diversity of economic development, like the four specialty chambers, I put those at 100%. And so I did exercise some discretion that admittedly is my own. After the work session, I changed a couple of them around. I was persuaded by what Councilmember Allen said about Sister Cities, and the final substitute moved that around to the way she suggested in the work session. And that's, that's at least a description of what my approach was.
Okay, and I appreciate that, I guess, kind of, you know, here, here we are again, we're a little bit all over the place, so maybe in this administration, we'll get kind of some consistency on that, but I appreciate everybody's efforts. I did also just, I mean, I know we all do this, and we kind of joke about how like opaque the 600 pages of this book are, and that's, you know, we go back to this Administrative at a Glance, where you can actually tell what's kind of happening, and we spend a lot of time on some of these smaller amounts. But in the larger amount field, I did have a few questions. So this is Section J, page 8, Administrative at a Glance, and so I don't know, Ms. McDonnell, if this is for you, but correctional health care is going up $5 million? Can somebody speak to that, and whether that might have? I know we keep coming back to this, but CARES eligibility, is that happening in a COVID space, or testing that population, or what's happening there? Is that a contractual thing?
That is a contractual increase, and I think it's a combination of maybe some additional services, but it's a contractual increase after a competitive bidding process.
Okay, contractual increase with whom? Who is the provider for this?
I am not remembering the name off the top of my head, but I can get it for you.
Okay, and that's supplemental to all the ready, the contracted for-profit prison stuff that we do, or is this on top of that, or is that a part of that contract?
This is providing care to the people in custody with the Sheriff's Department.
Also, forensic, right there, this is kind of a culture thing, forensic medical examiner going up $400,000. It's kind of gone up and down. For two years, the actual was below 5 million, now it's at 5.7 million. Can anybody speak to that one?
Yeah, that is also a contractual increase.
All right, so a lot of these contractual increases. Okay, and then Chair, bear with me, I think I have one more question on this page, I'm sorry. And, blah, 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 blah. So, on page seven there, back to the first page of Administrative at a Glance, so pension, IOD, injured on duty, medical expense, at about, budgeted at about 5.4 million, 7.4 actual, zeroed out in last year's budget, and now to, up to 5.8? That's also contractual, what's happening there?
That is, the IOD fund is another one of those self-insured funds of Metro. Last year, there wasn't anything budgeted to contribute to the IOD fund, because it had built up quite a, quite a large fund balance. But this year, they are having to budget some money to make sure that we don't fully deplete the fund balance. So it's not as high as it was, say, two years ago, but we just have to put some funding in this year.
Okay, so I appreciate that, and so I guess it went from not needing to be funded at all, because we had ample, to going back beyond what we had done before? So I guess when I'm sort of looking at that, and seeing the 5.4, understanding from you that it was ample, so we didn't add anything, recognizing maybe that wasn't the most prudent thing to do, but then, I mean, effectively, you're saying now we're making it up by putting in 5.8 million, and then as far as, yeah, I apologize, that's the end of my question.
And I think there are about four different accounts that pick up the funding for the IOD fund, there are a couple in the USD, and a couple in the GSD. And there's employees and pensioners. And I'm not going to remember this exactly off the top of my head, but I want to say the funding for the current year is something in the neighborhood of 9 to 10 million. The IOD fund expenses are around 16 million. We're not, you know, we're not putting in more than what the expenses are, but we did need to contribute to it this year to make sure that we didn't, you know, put the fund in a, you know, in a financial strain.
Okay. And then, lastly, Chair, this kind of circles back around to Councilwoman O'Connell's earlier question, and, you know, as far as us engaging our citizens, I know that, you know, the property tax relief thresholds are kind of set on the state side. I see here, from a budget perspective, that we've got like an extra 115K in property tax relief in the USD General Fund. And I just, you know, I didn't know if, kind of, what the reasoning that went into that, I mean, obviously, in a year where you have an increase, but I'm just getting so much outreach from fixed-income seniors who's, you know, really like, you know, their property is kind of more than their house, sort of a situation, but they maybe have some investments, but they're just not meeting that threshold for property tax relief. And so, is this just the state, I guess, the state-enabled program, and that we're just increasing our amount to it? And I guess, I wonder, you know, should we be increasing it more in fact, and to make it a bit to the property tax relief piece, please?
I'll ask Mr. Cooper to comment on that. I've explored this question with him and with Finance in detail, I think, three times in the last six weeks. The, I'll give you the punchline, and then ask Mr. Cooper to give the details. The punchline is, everybody believes this is not only adequately funded, but probably won't spend the full amount. The problem historically has been getting more people to sign up, or the very low threshold set by state law. But there's a feeling that as far as our ability to successfully finance it, that we've, we're maxing out the effort there. But I'll let Mr. Cooper give the details on that.
Thank you. Yes, Chair Mendez is correct. For many years, Metro matched the state at a 2 to 1 ratio, so...
I recall, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so the past couple of years, we've been doing a 3 to 1 ratio, just because there weren't enough eligible households who are applying. And the reasoning for that primarily is because the income limit is set by the state. It's actually set in the state statute, so there's nothing that we can do to make more people eligible, it's just a matter of using the funds to pay for those that do qualify.
And then, Mr. Cooper, do you know, and I recognize this somewhat moot for the budget we're about to pass, but, you know, the legislature is still in session. I mean, I remember speaking with kind of Trustee Cardwell about this, like, I felt like I had a fair number of seniors that were kind of just, kind of missing, right, the state thresholds, and I felt like Trustee Cardwell said it had been taken up in the past. I mean, is Nashville trying in any regard to lobby to have that adjusted?
A resolution, I was thinking it was actually on the last agenda, but it might be coming up on the next agenda, that specifically request an increase in those income limits.
Hey, would you forward that to me? I apologize that I had missed that, but thank you very much. That's it, Chair, for me, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, I've got Councilmember Van Reese next, but I think your hand might be left from before, or no? All right, it was left over from before, Councilmember Swara. Nope, she just disappeared off my list entirely. Maybe she'll log back in. Meanwhile, I see Director Crumbo's hand up, do you have something to add?
Yes, Chair, thanks for recognizing me. I just wanted to talk about the targeted savings in your budget for a moment. You're well aware, but I just want to make sure the rest of the committee is, that the departments have already taken a lot of targeted savings over the last few years, and, you know, obviously, under pressure at this moment because of the COVID and the tornado relief and things that all of you are aware are going on. So as we look at having that delegated to finance the administration overall, I just want to caution that, you know, we will have to try and spread that across as many departments as we can without disturbing any of the emergency impact, I'm sorry, the emergency services that we're providing at this moment. And so, just a caution that some may be disappointed if we have to cut back some hours or some service delivery for a while to get to that targeted amount. It's frankly not a big... It's frankly not a big number, uh, but one that'll stretch us a little bit thin here as we start out this, uh, new year. And I just want to make sure everyone is aware that it's not just a easy waving the wand, uh, for us to do that.
Thanks very much. Uh, Councilmember Swara, are you back on?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I got dropped off a minute, so I may have missed something. Uh, but what I wanted to say is that I want to refer, uh, our colleagues to the website or the, the, um, Budget and Finance that has the resource page, that has a collision of, uh, uh, or a compilation of all the questions and budgets that some of us have been asking from the beginning. Uh, listening to some of the questions that were asked tonight, uh, some of those were already asked, and there are some data, um, more detailed data, uh, to support some of them on that website. I will share the link with everyone, uh, but I wanted to share, if people is looking at the budget and they have question, uh, it's because a lot of it was asked beforehand through Maria to the finance office and to several of the other departments. And so, people can find a lot of the answers in there as a way to go forward in their review. So, I wanted to point that out, uh, for everyone, and I'll be sure to, to share that link with everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember, and I've, uh, I've admittedly, I appreciate, um, that. I've admittedly, um, tried to run a tight ship and, and direct people to that, um, Metro Council Resources, uh, uh, list of information. Um, and I, I wanted to have a little more flexibility this evening because, um, now that the budget's passed second reading, passed, um, uh, the public hearing, um, uh, we've got, I think it looks like there's going to be two budgets that satisfy the comptroller, um, and one that's coming whenever it comes, um, but I doubt is going to satisfy the comptroller. Um, we're, we're zeroing in on, uh, third reading next week, and I wanted to make sure if anybody's, um, got questions, um, that, uh, I didn't, uh, cut that off today. Um, so, uh, I see, uh, Councilmember Allen with her hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. As, as you know, we have gotten a couple of emails from people asking us to slow the process down and to defer this, and I think it, it would be helpful, at least for you, to acknowledge that if we determine that it's necessary to slow this process down, that we do have the opportunity to adjourn another meeting, you know, and, and continue working, um, and that we're not ignoring those calls for slowing things down. We have that option, um, if, if we, if we need it, and I think it's important for people to be aware of that.
Respectfully, Councilmember Allen, I would refer you to Councilman Glover's, uh, Facebook broadcast from Saturday. Um, those emails are 100% generated from his Facebook broadcast, and as of today, Councilman Glover's been working on his budget for, um, over a month with no discernible progress in telling us anything about what's in it. And, um, I for one am not going to, um, slow down the process, um, for, um, that purpose, um, because I, I don't, I don't think that's, uh, if there was a legitimate budget there, we would have heard something about it by now. Uh, but, um, your point is well taken that the actual deadline is June 30th, um, and, um, if, if, if the will of the body next Tuesday is that we, um, delay, um, uh, waiting for budgets that, um, waiting for other budgets to show up, um, obviously, the, the will of the body will prevail. Um, I, I feel like, um, between the, um, countywide hearings, uh, meetings that Councilmember Tooms and I had, um, before COVID-19, and, um, uh, and, and frankly, the multiple ways that people can interact this year, it's turned out that, uh, we've, we've covered a lot of ground. Um, but your, your point is well taken.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, and I, I'm not advocating waiting for other budgets, just that if we, if we discover we have more amendments we need to work on, there's a process that would allow us to, if we discover that we need to. So, thank you.
Well, and on the amendments, I, um, that was the last thing on my list to mention, um, is that, uh, amendments are, um, this is not my deadline, this is, uh, Director Cooper's deadline. Amendments to the operating budget, amendments to the operating budget are due this Wednesday at noon. If you have an amendment that you want to offer for the operating budget, you've got till noon on Wednesday to get it, uh, Director Cooper, um, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna let him, uh, comment on whether that's flexible or not flexible.
Thank you, Chair. Um, the, the reason we had to set the, the deadline is because the amendments have to be sent out to the council members Friday afternoon, and we'll need a couple of days to prepare all of them and run them by finance to make sure that they work. Um, so it's just a, um, an, an actual time allotment that we have to have to get the amendments prepared.
All right, we've got a couple hands, thank you, Mr. Cooper. We've got a couple hands up in the queue now. Um, Councilmember Johnston?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo Council, Council Lady Allen's point to that, personally, I feel this rush, and I know that this budget is one of the most complicated and difficult ones that this county has probably ever seen. And so, I would advocate, regardless of Glover or whatever, whatever, to have enough time to fully understand what's going on and to really dive into whatever amendments may come in, to take the time that we need and to take the time that we have, based on the charter, because my understanding is June 30th, um, to, to defer and add another week just to give a little bit of time, um, I, I would be all for that. And, and so I just, I just want to put that out there.
Mr. Cooper, if we wait the extra week to June 30th, uh, 23rd, will we have time to override a veto if our budget got vetoed?
Um, it depends on when the mayor vetoed it. Um, it would have to, it, it would depend, it would depend on the timing of that. If, if he vetoed it immediately, then, uh, by charter, we can call a special meeting with 48 hours notice, um, so that, that would be the, the timing issue.
And, and if he took the fullest amount of time that he's got under the charter to veto it, then we would not have enough time to meet again?
That is likely correct, yes.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Henderson?
Oh, gosh, I'm mute, sorry. Um, uh, Chair and, uh, Mr. Cooper, I wonder, you know, since we're 50% in the body, and, and even for me, um, sometimes remembering the order of operations and how complicated it gets sometimes, when we have, um, an amendments package that's really sizable, um, can you speak to kind of best practice, what the office will do? I mean, do you try to reconcile, uh, you know, if you have amendments that are redundant to each other, um, should colleagues, uh, kind of package their amendments somewhat by way of presentation, um, but also, they will be in separately? Will they be, uh, lettered A through Z? Um, can you just kind of talk through technically how that happens and how that works so that people understand, um, how best to offer amendments? Please?
Sure. So, uh, in the amendments packet, they will be numbered, um, one through however many there are. Um, if, as we get amendment requests, if we see some that are redundant or are very close to what has been requested by someone else, we will tell that council member and, um, encourage, you know, see if you want to, to just kind of be a co-sponsor of, of that other amendment. Um, so we, we will do our best to keep them, um, pared down as, as much as possible. Um, and, but then, once the amendments go out, uh, we'll, we'll send them out Friday afternoon so that council members have the weekend to review them, and then they'll be considered in committee on Monday. Uh, no amendment can be offered in committee if it hasn't been considered, I'm sorry, no amendment can be offered on the council floor if it hasn't been considered in the Budget and Finance Committee. Um, so that's the reason that we get them all out on Friday since the committee meets on Monday.
Okay, so there should be, that Budget and Finance Committee meeting will be a long one then, right? I would assume. Um, but also, can you speak to on Tuesday, the order of operations as far as what bill comes before us? You know, the, the mayor's budget is what has been filed, the chair's, uh, is a substitute to the mayor's. Um, I, I don't know if we'll have other, um, substitutes, um, but, uh, it, it, again, order of operations, um, is, is it up or down for the mayor's budget, or does council amendments move a substitute up and down, then we amend it? Like, can you just talk through kind of hypotheticals there so people can understand how best to advocate for their amendments?
So, the, the chair's budget, the, the mayor's budget will be moved on third reading just to get it before the body. The chair will move his substitute. Uh, during the discussion portion of his substitute, if other council members who have substitutes want to, uh, say, here's my, you know, my, I think my substitute's better and here's why, don't vote for the chair substitute, then they have that opportunity. But, once the, the chair's substitute is accepted onto the bill, which just requires a majority vote, then the mayor's budget goes away. And so, all you're dealing with is the chair substitute. If someone else moves another substitute, and that substitute is accepted with a majority vote, it is no longer amendable, and so the council just has to vote up or down on the second substitute. If the council does not vote for a substitute with 21 votes, then the mayor's budget goes into effect by operation of law, which is what happened for the current fiscal year.
Okay, and then, um, Mr. Cooper? I guess, um, as it relates to, uh, amendments, you know, most of us over this past month, whether through the questions that we posed to the council office, the going line, even some of the questions that were posed today, you know, the budget book that we are looking at is, is the mayor's budget. Um, and I appreciate, uh, you know, Chair Mendez sharing yesterday evening and now kind of having out there, um, uh, what his approach is. Um, Chair, you alluded to it early this morning, uh, a 9:32 or something, I'm, I'm looking for it. If, if you could share from whom in our office that came, and is that your, um, you know, vetted by finance, detailed in full, because, you know, again, you know, we've been kind of conceptually constructing what some of these amendments might be, um, but we've been doing that off the mayor's budget, and so we only just now have the chair's proposed substitute. So, um, you know, it makes more sense really to think of your amendments in the framework of the chair's substitute. So, um, is that document there in, in full in our inbox for analysis between now and Wednesday at noon?
Yes, the email came out from me, John, this morning, um, at Councilman Mendez's request, and the, the chart that he has created, um, details all of the changes that are made in his substitute budget compared to what the mayor submitted. So, there's nothing in the actual budget ordinance that, that is not reflected in, um, in that chart from a, a change standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Our list is growing. Uh, Councilmember Evans?
Thank you. Um, I wanted to go back to the question that, uh, Councilwoman, um, Johnston was, um, asking about related to, um, delaying the vote for a little bit, and I just wanted to know, what's that window in the charter between we approve a budget and the mayor, uh, if he elected to veto it? How many days does he actually have according to the charter to veto?
Mr. Cooper?
So, you're getting into, you're getting into an area of, of charter interpretation that has never been tested. Um, it is unclear to me, under the charter, whether the mayor has the, the power to veto. As, when I was legal director, my opinion last year was that the mayor did not have the power to veto the budget, but could veto the tax levy. That's not tested, it's, it's not crystal clear in, in the charter, um, how that works, but assuming the mayor does have the authority to veto, and, and we know that he can do a, um, line item veto, that's specified in the budget. Um, you know, he can go in and, and adjust specific line items, but, but a all-out veto has, has not been tested. Um, so, but assuming, assuming he did have that authority, he could theoretically wait until June 30th to do it, um, and then, then his budget would, would go into effect.
Thank you.
Um, all right, uh, Councilmember Druffel?
Thanks, Chair. Um, as I'm trying to look at the process, the variations in amendments, I've not been through this before, but it seemed like with this kind of budget, it could be significant. Um, and, and since we don't have an ability to collaborate before those amendments, we'll be reviewing in finance some significant variations, I would, I suspect. Um, I, I'm sort of leaning toward Councilwoman Johnston's thought of, I don't know what the chances of delaying, but to consolidate everybody's ideas that have similar, uh, amendments, it seems like there could be a value of consolidating those next week versus trying to get them done by Tuesday. I'm talking out loud a little bit, but.
Yes, in, in previous, in previous years, um, and I'll, I'll let Mr. Cooper talk about in previous years, the, the, the point of the work sessions was so that people could talk about what changes they wanted, and I could do my best to, um, absorb them. And for, um, for all the wish list items that got offered, um, I, I think, um, uh, over half of them got, um, built into the final substitute. And so, if people were committing, um, uh, to the wish list process, then, um, there's, there's really only a handful, a handful and a half of ideas that anybody's expressed at this point, um, left, and, and none of them are very high dollar amount. And so, the amendments that are left are ones that people haven't spoken up about yet, that nobody expressed in a wish list. Um, and of course, it's, it's your prerogative to, anybody's prerogative to, um, offer, um, new amendments, um, new concepts, as long as they get them to Mr. Cooper by noon on Wednesday. Um, but, um, legitimately, um, to the extent that there's a lot of large-dollar amount, um, amendments coming, you know, so far, whoever the sponsors are, have, haven't really shared those with, with the group, um, to participate in the process.
Thanks, Chair. I was just thinking if there's, I know I'm still going back through a couple times, trying to sift through this, if there's any cost savings, uh, amendments, that's sort of what I'm looking at, or any potential. Um, we got clear direction on a couple areas, like fund balances, et cetera, but, uh, I, I, it, it's just top of mind, I think there's, if there's that opportunity to help work through amendments in a more, uh, collaborative or, or a different way, I, I, and I don't know what that's going to look like, to be honest with you, but I, I think there might be a value, and, and that's what, um, so it, it may be worth some value of, of extending the week. Uh, it depends on what this looks like.
Uh, certainly. Certainly. Um, I, I would recommend the Budget and Finance Committee meeting that's set for June 15th, um, is, like, people should plan on, um, that's the, uh, Councilmember Henderson mentioned, that'll go a while. Um, uh, everybody who's a council member, committee member or not, is welcome to, um, be in on that call. The Budget and Finance Committee's got a, uh, um, long tradition of hearing from all council members on the committee or not, and, and that's typically where one would expect to, um, hash those things out. Um, Councilmember Rosenberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, a couple of things. First of all, the legitimate point's been made that some of these amendments come in last second, and it's nice to have more time to consider them. Um, when we've had this conversation in the past, the also legitimate point's been made that by delaying an extra week, we just end up with another week of people submitting amendments, um, and kind of end up right back where we started, and, and that's just kind of a function, I think, of our amendment deadlines, um, and it's an unfortunate side effect of that.
Well, that, that, that's a, a fair point. I, I think, uh, um, for new council members, you're gonna, you're gonna find out that, um, as, as, uh, as much as most, um, folks are interested in more time in order to get more deliberation, uh, there's always going to be some folks that are, um, using delay to create confusion, make political points, um, delay. be some folks that are using delay to create confusion, make political points, delay, obstruct. And there is, part of the reason why, historically at least, and we can do whatever we want, whatever there's enough votes for, but historically, try to stick to the schedule, because then there is a certain fairness to the playing field. There was a time for the wish list items. So, but you make a good point, Councilman Rosenberg.
Thank you. And Mr. Cooper, I can say I'm unique in the fact that I'm looking forward to a conversation with you about why the 10-day veto doesn't necessarily apply to the budget. But if we get to a point where we put on the chair's substitute, and then we don't get 21 votes, and I guess this would have applied last year too, is there an opportunity to bring back another budget ordinance or backtrack in any way for, you know, the chair of budget to bring an additional budget to, you know, after that?
No. Once the substitute is accepted, if it does not get 21 votes, that's it. It's game over, and there's no way to resurrect anything. The substitute has failed, and the mayor's budget goes into effect July 1st.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. I think we've got, I think Councilmember Johnston was next.
So, I understand the wish list process, and I appreciate that. And I also appreciate the deadline for amendments. But what I'm hearing and what my personal problem is, I feel like there are several council members that are really, really hesitant after the two-month or however long we've been in this mess with COVID-19, to so steeply raise property taxes, not only for our residents, our low-income residents that will just further gentrify, but our fixed-income residents that are older and elderly, but also our small businesses. It is so punitive that, I mean, I guess a wish list could have been, hey, where are some more savings that we can do here to mitigate this incredibly steep property tax? I understand a property tax increase is needed, but 32%, I just feel like is going to be debilitating, and it's going to take years to come back from, from a small business perspective. I know that my small business, when I had it, would never have survived this, ever. And so, I'm a little sick to my stomach, and I'm really, I really, if the reason to not defer, to give us some time to think about these, not necessarily continually throw out more amendments, but at least to deliberate them and really think about some other options, if the reason is to avoid some sort of power play veto that the mayor may do, that we don't even know if is legal or not, I feel like it's out of line. Respectfully.
I mean, I'll bite. I mean, I'm open to any suggestion conceivable to get a rate lower than what the mayor's proposed. A lot of people have been thinking about it for a long time, and nobody has stated an idea that would get the rate lower than the mayor's and not get the comptroller to take over our finances. So, anybody on the call who's got an idea about that is welcome to throw it out now.
I don't know why we're not talking about furloughs. That makes no sense to me. When we've got businesses, we've got people that have lost their jobs, we've got businesses that are shuttering, and yet, nobody's talking about furloughs. And I understand, when I met with the mayor, that process or that option was, well, we're expecting to possibly have this happen again in the fall, and so, that's kind of an option that we're kind of holding back. It's like, no. If we're all in this together, we're all in this together. And there's ways to stagger these furloughs. It could possibly show that maybe we can be a little bit more efficient just by forcing that hand. But I feel like, as far as my residents go, and my small businesses that are in my district, I feel like I owe it to them to show that we have made significant cuts, and that we are in this game with them, and we have done everything we can possibly do to not give this punitive 32% increase. This has been for years, years. It's been mismanagement for years. This is not their fault. I understand COVID-19 and all that, but we are in a financial situation because of financial mismanagement for a long time.
So, Councilmember Johnson, that's not going to be in the mayor's budget, and it's not going to be in my budget. You're welcome to submit an amendment.
Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Chair. It's been very interesting listening to everyone speak tonight, and with the passion and the concern for what is happening here in the city and for our citizens. I have been surprised that I have heard more people in support of, in terms of my constituents, in support of a tax increase, because they understand the need for a tax increase in order to keep Nashville functional and providing the services that they need, especially in this time of COVID, and the things that have had such a negative impact on their life. It seems to me, based on our conversation today, there are only two budget proposals that we know so far that will pass muster with the comptroller. I don't think we should be delaying a vote on this, because I would not want the citizens of Nashville to end up with a budget by default that does not meet their needs, that further takes away, that cuts services that they need ever more drastically today. I don't see a benefit in furloughing people, and again, cutting off the services that people need to maintain some semblance of a quality of life and community well-being. We will get through COVID, but we need to know that our city can continue to move forward and give our citizens what we need, when they need it, the best that we can. So, I feel it is unwise to try to delay. We should go through the amendment process, but we should also have a mechanism that if the mayor vetoes, that we can come back and make sure that we are getting the best budget in place for the citizens of Nashville, and to give our citizens what they need every day, so that their lives can maintain as much of a semblance of normalcy as possible during these truly tumultuous times.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Councilmember Syracuse.
Thank you, Chair. I was hoping maybe you would talk a little bit about the substitute that you have that includes the requirement for the finance director to present us better or more updated projections by August 15th. Would that be in a form of a separate resolution? And then, what are your thoughts as far as, once we get that report? And I know, what I read there is, as far as perhaps making that last-minute adjustment to the rate before the October bills go out, is the thought that either the rate that we set in your substitute is not enough, or could it possibly be too much, where it could come back down? Thank you.
Thanks. So, it'll be language in the substitute ordinance itself, so it'll be in the budget, in the first several pages where there's text rather than numbers. And this is, you could see the language in the amendments package from this last week. There's a sample of it, so people could have it out there for a few weeks. The idea is that the tax bills go out in October. The trustee is told, Mr. Cooper, after investigating with the printer and trying to figure out exactly when was the last possible date that the tax levy could change, and still get the tax bills out on time, September 1 was the date that came back. And so, because there's so many things, like will federal law change? Will the federal government have a new relief package? Will the federal government have a new loan program? Will the economy come roaring back and sales tax revenue is looking better? Does the universe end and somehow revenue look worse? I don't think, I don't think that's likely that it's worse. But if there's a new federal program, or tax revenue comes back really quickly, really well, then the idea by asking for an updated revenue projection by August 15 would be that if it came back and it looked obviously much better than what we're looking at now, then we'd have a last chance to take a look at the tax rate. Now, we'd have to, we'd have to move in an extraordinary way. We'd have to set up three meetings by the end of the month of August to reduce the levy. And the thinking in proposing August 15 is the, well, if I wanted to leave time for three readings, it would be July 15. And that's just silly, because that's, you know, only four weeks from now. The projection's not going to be a lot different. I don't know if it's going to be any different at all on August 15, but that would at least preserve the opportunity where we can tell constituents legitimately, we've ordered the finance director to give us a last-minute update before it's too late to get the tax bills out. And if it shows something a lot better, we'll have time to react to it. I am not anticipating, to answer the last little bit of your question, Councilmember, I am not anticipating that there would be a universe where the wheels come off the economy even more, and it would get pushed up. The intention here is to have an opportunity to look at it going down if something happens with federal legislation. That's the most likely scenario.
Yeah, that's great. And I really appreciate that, how you're going across that and ensuring we have as best of a data-driven decision-making process as possible. So, thank you.
Thanks. I've got Councilmember Virture next on the list, and then Councilmember Henderson is the only other person with her hand up right now. Oh, Ann Rotten.
Thank you so much, Chair. Correct me if I'm wrong. I'm recalling one of the budget hearings, and I believe it was with the chamber, where it was alluded to that they were left out of the mayor's budget, and they were going to be added back. I may have the organization incorrect.
The chamber was one where, yeah, it was complicated. I think there was some, frankly, some last-minute confusion in the administration right before the budget came out. The mayor had, original budget, as it stands now, has a single line item for $900,000 that they intended to go to a bunch of organizations that weren't listed out. And so, there was some confusion immediately after the budget came out, whether groups were in or out. And there were some nonprofits that, and the chamber, that saw their names were not in the budget anymore. But the mayor's office, within a couple days, clarified that the list that they intended to be getting some of that $900,000, and the chamber is one of those. Does that make sense?
It does. How did, that $900,000, is it itemized out anywhere?
It, to my knowledge, I don't think the administration, Mr. Jamison is in the room. They're planning on itemizing it out in an amendment, but I know they plan on including the chamber, and there's a list somewhere that we've gotten, I think by email, about that. Maybe Mr. Jamison could get that sent around again.
Yeah, just for procedure-wise, how are they going to get the amendment on the mayor's budget?
Mr. Cooper?
So, the only way that would work is if, when the mayor's budget is moved on third reading, as soon as we get to the budget, and then amendments are moved at that time so that the mayor's budget has amendments on it, and then the chair's substitute does not get accepted, meaning it doesn't get a majority vote, then you would be back on the mayor's budget as amended. Or you could even wait until amendments to the mayor's budget after voting on the chair's substitute. But if the chair's substitute gets accepted by majority vote, then the mayor's budget goes away, and there would be no opportunity to amend at that point.
I'm just, just procedurally, because we don't know which budget is going to pass, so we have one budget that has some, for lack of better words, it's somewhat discrepant. And then, we have another budget, just procedurally-wise, we're not being afforded an opportunity to vote on accurate budgets. Well, one, we know, but the other has some discrepant data in it.
And you're talking about the mayor's budget currently doesn't say what the nonprofits are?
Correct.
Yeah. Why don't I ask Mr. Jamison and Mr. Cooper to figure out how to make sure that, first of all, all of us are clear about what nonprofits they want to fund? And then, second, figure out the procedural question. So, I mean, I don't want to leave something incomplete due to parliamentary things. So, they can work out and make sure that gets before us.
Thank you so much, Chair.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Chair. So, just kind of pursuant to the earlier conversation about, you know, amendments that might be offered, and the difference kind of between a wish list, which, you know, typically happens in a space of, I want to add this and, you know, trade it for that somewhat, I mean, just from a fund standpoint. I had asked Austin Kyle many, many months back to give a look to, as I wondered for a while, you know, whether in the context of transit or our regular budget, what we were doing with kind of the wheel tax, our annual auto registration. We have more cars in this county than we do people. And so, I know that Councilman Glover filed a resolution. I am, I mean, nothing about that, I'm not aligned with that particular effort, but that was something that I was considering prior to even seeing his filing that, or his, you know, his, I guess, call it a presentation on Saturday. So, you know, just for colleagues' reference, I mean, I would be interested to know how people feel about that. I mean, it's at present, if you include the postage charge, it's $68 annually for a vehicle in Davidson County. I think it's important that we keep that under 100, but, you know, for the cost of a tank of gas, or $30 for each vehicle, you know, that can generate about, I think about 15 million. And then, if we say every cent of the proposed tax increase is about 3, you know, that brings it down. I mean, if you're operating from the mayor's, a dollar, that brings it down to 95 cents. I mean, I know folks may think, well, that doesn't matter, but I think every cent matters, and it's kind of incumbent upon us to show that we've looked at every alternative. And so, you know, I'm thinking about that. I'm also looking again at some of these ECD incentives, which have language in them as to availability of funds, doing a little additional research in that space. And then, also, some of the research that we've done through the council budget hearings, and was requested, I think by you, Chair, of, you know, positions in various departments that are not filled, and kind of seeing, you know, what those departments think about those. I know sometimes that's almost from a budgetary perspective intentional, it's kind of backfilling something. So, you know, please know, I'm not just willy-nilly, you know, canceling out all unfilled positions. I know those often serve a purpose. But, you know, I'm kind of looking at vehicle registration, some of the ECD, some of the unfilled FTEs, and so, that's where I'm hoping to bring amendments. And so, to your point about, you know, kind of taking time and having discussion, I don't know if colleagues have any questions or thoughts about the vehicle registration, but I'd be interested to know if colleagues are amenable to that.
So, Mr. Cooper, do we have enough readings left to change fees or wheel taxes before we pass the budget?
So, tomorrow night, the council on second reading will be... So tomorrow night, the council on second reading will be considering Councilman Glover's proposal to increase the wheel tax. So that will be on, on second reading. It needs to pass on second reading if it's going to be viable for third reading on the 16th, obviously.
So, Mr. Cooper, I could amend that potentially?
Yes, it would be amendable on third reading since it's a tax measure.
And then, and then the, the question that goes along with that, on the, we've talked a couple of different times, you've explained to us what has to be, what can be an amendment, what has to be a substitute. Where would this fall on that spectrum?
This would just be a, a change to revenue, so it, it could be done by amendment. You'd just be, you would substitute some of the property tax revenue with wheel tax revenue and then decrease the tax levy accordingly. So theoretically, it could be done.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Colleagues, anybody have any thoughts on that?
Councilmember Henderson, I'm going to pick this up after we get done with other people in the comments. I didn't, I didn't know that at two, two and a half hours in, we were going to start that conversation. I'll pick it up after I hear from other folks.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Councilmember Rotten? You there, Councilmember? We'll circle back to him. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is actually a comment on Councilmember Henderson. That also seems like something that we could pick up when we get the report from the Finance Director on anticipated revenues, because if we know at that point that the wheel tax has changed, he would have an update on anticipated revenues. That might be another way to handle that.
Thank you. Let's try Councilmember Rotten again. You're unmuted, but we can't hear you. I'm not sure why that is. Looks like we've got some technical issue with Councilmember Rotten. Councilmember Virture, is your hand up from before? All right. All right. Whenever Councilmember Rotten, if he figures out the tax issue, just speak up and we'll take you out of order. Anybody with comments about the wheel tax idea?
Mr. Chair, this is John Cooper. I've, I've been told that Councilman Rotten may want to try checking his cell phone to see if, if that's muted. I just received that text from ITS.
All right. Councilmember Druffel?
Just a matter of process. I like the, the wheel tax idea. Would we just want to do a hand raise to do a quick assessment, rather than go through comments?
Well, before we, before we do that, maybe, I don't know what, about anybody else, but I don't really read everything on first reading, so maybe Mr. Cooper can describe what's in the legislation.
So Councilman Glover is proposing increasing both the passenger wheel tax, we call it a motor regulatory license fee here, but increasing both the commercial and passenger vehicle fee. And I think he had estimated that this increase would generate 30 million, if I'm correct. And that was clearly seen until the increase. I don't remember the exact number, the analysis that he put out for the meeting for tomorrow night. I don't remember exactly how much he was increasing those. And I don't have the analysis with me right here in this room.
All right. Is somebody from Finance on to describe if they have comments about that?
Chairman Duzan, if I may, I do have the resolution in front of me. Again, my proposal would not be the same as, as Councilman Glover's, but it might provide a vehicle through amendment to achieve the same thing, so.
Let's, let's hear, let's hear whether, let's hear what, I've just, I haven't discussed those with Finance, so I'm curious whether they have a comment one way or the other.
Okay, Chair.
And I'm sorry, I don't have that draft legislation in front of me. This is Kim. What specifically was the question, Councilman?
Just what's in the legislation for the wheel tax that Councilman Glover's proposed, and, and how much revenue it would create?
I believe that there was, I believe what he was proposing was about 14 and 1/2, $15 million increase in total. But again, I don't have the legislation in front of me.
All right. Councilmember Henderson? There's one other person with their hand up. Do you want to go next, or hear from whoever, the other Councilmember?
I'm happy to hear from someone else. I do have the legislation in front of me. And again, I had Austin Kyle do some analysis on this several months ago, so I do have, I believe, the answers that the, that the committee will need. So I'm happy to hear from Finance or any other colleague.
Councilmember Porterfield?
Thank you so much, Chair. Just for clarification, in the event that the, if I understand Councilwoman Allen's statement a little bit earlier, in the event that the wheel tax does pass, we will have the opportunity to consider that revenue prior to the final tax bill heading out to property owners. So we could consider reducing the tax rate at that time if the wheel tax has passed, and we will know what revenue that generates. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, I think that's right. And if Finance had it right, that equates to like a 4 and 1/2 cent difference. But yeah, you've got that right.
Okay, thank you. That was my next question, was the cent difference. So thank you.
Yeah, that, I mean, it sounded like Finance was using an approximate number, and I'm using an approximate number based on that, but it's about 3.2 million per penny of property tax, and Ms. McDonald said it was 14 to 15 million, and so it'd be something under 5 cents difference. Councilmember Henderson?
Yes, sir. That, that is correct, specifically on personal vehicles. Councilman Glover proposes going from 66 up to 116. I was not proposing an increase of that much. I'd like to see something about around $98. I think it's important we keep it under 100. And also just conceptually, like the, that, a change of about $30 would be, you know, kind of like just one tank of gas. So I do my math, and again, I have a more detailed spreadsheet from Mr. Kyle, but yes, effectively, it, it brings the, the rate down only just on a personal vehicle, that brings it down to 5 cents, and then you can maybe, it may be one more cent out of the commercial vehicle registrations, because those are organized a little bit differently.
Thank you.
But I did like Mr. Druffel's suggestion. I mean, if it's something that colleagues would consider or support, I would assert to Councilwoman Porterfield and Councilwoman Allen, I think, because we do have kind of a resolution in progress, we have done some analysis on it, and I can, I'm happy to forward and share with the body through Mr. Cooper. You know, I think some, some work has been done on it, and so I would assert that we have ample time by Wednesday, and then file it on Friday, and then for discussion on Monday to go ahead and bring this to bear in the context of, of this budget. So.
All right. And I'll, I'll just go ahead and share my view of if we're going to do a raising of hands, which is fine. I mean, obviously, all revenue sources are, should be explored. Typically, it's the, the sponsor of the wheel tax who has often, on the floor of the Chamber, talked about springing people, things on constituents. And I just, I don't know that the community knows this is coming, and so I don't know the, I don't know whether there are groups in the community that will have a problem with that. I do think that wheel tax ends up being a pretty regressive tax, impacting lower-income people disproportionately. That's my, my sense of it, but I don't, I haven't really studied it. So I'm probably going to be in the camp of, if it's worth talking about, it's, it's, you know, we can get it done, it's not part of the budget, but no hard feelings if people want to pursue it. So with that, I'll let, Councilman Henderson, I'll let you pose the question that has hands up or hands not. So, go ahead.
Okay, I appreciate that. So again, I, there is a piece of legislation that has been filed. It, you know, surprised to me, it's something that I had been thinking about. So again, I'm, I'm not asking for kind of up and down as Councilman Glover has currently proposed it, but I guess I would just like to know if, you know, this is a one-annual registration, we have over 600,000 cars in Davidson County, you know, by increasing this one-time registration by the cost of a tank of gas, keeping it under $100, you know, we could garner over 50 million and thus reduce the tax rate by 5 cents. And I can certainly send detailed backup information in support of that, but just conceptually, if this is something you would consider or support, potentially support, if you would click your raise-hand button.
Hey, Councilman Henderson, I just got a note from John Cooper, and I'm going to ask Councilmembers to take their hands down on this. He advises that since this wasn't noticed, we shouldn't be voting even informally. And so.
What's just noticed is a budget work session? What have we been talking about all this time?
It was noticed as a work session. It was not noticed as a discussion of an item that's on the agenda for tomorrow night where there will be a vote. So I, that's, that's my only hesitancy, is that there actually will be a vote on this tomorrow night.
Okay. I, I understand that, yeah. Again, I'm, I'm not advancing this colleague's particular bill, I was just trying to keep it in a more conceptual space. So I appreciate the efficiency of a hand up, but I guess, Councilman Duzan, I would just appreciate knowing, again, just conceptually, not particular to this legislation, would that be appropriate, Mr. Cooper, if anybody wants to share just conceptually what they think about this as a potential revenue source in a general way?
Yes, and discussion is fine either tonight or, or tomorrow.
All right. So let's, let's leave it at, I appreciate the advice from our lawyer about the, using the hands up as a voting function. So we'll take a pass through the group to find out whether anybody's got a comment about the concept of this as a revenue source. I see Councilmember Nash's hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this is one of those years where the wheel taxes, is take the money from my right-hand pocket from my left-hand pocket, we're still taking $100 million, or, I'm sorry, a dollar out of, out of my pocket, one way or the other. And I don't think it's going to be all that helpful when you've got 95 cents versus a dollar. Folks are not going to be any happier that, oh, I'm going to also pay a little extra for my car. I, I wish it was, in a different year, I think it'd be a great option, but I, I just don't think it's going to help us any here, ease anybody's pain.
Thank you. Councilman Druffel?
My vote is at least to look at it as an option. Thank you.
All right. We'll pretend you didn't say your vote, but I understand that as your general sense of things.
Sorry, I didn't mean it that way. Okay.
Anybody else have a thought about this concept? Councilmember Swara?
Thank you, Chair. I think that looking into all the revenue sources, something being asked and all of that, and I think it's something we should look into, but I don't think it's for this budget. I think that a 5 cent off for this budget, I don't think it's going to make any, not going to make much difference, like C.M. Nash said. Should we look into things in the future? Do we need to scrub some things and look into these? Definitely. I'm open to it in the future, but I don't think it would do much. 5 cent is not going to make a difference to most people for this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Scrolling up and down the queue, I don't see anybody else. All right, everybody, this has been great. Thank you for all the participation. We have amendments due to Mr. Cooper at noon on Wednesday this week. And so that's it, and thanks, everybody, for participating. Have a good evening.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit nashville.gov.